Let's continue public hearing for the residences at Garage Pines LLC 207 Dodge Road. Site plan, special permit applications we have in our possession, the technical planning review report number two for the residences at Raleigh Country Park. And we have our technical review consultant Larry Graham from H.L. Graham Associates. Who will engage the applicant? I'd like to actually turn that over.
Okay.
I believe that H.L. Graham worked hard after the last meeting to review the revised plans, including the landscape plan, and any changes that were made to the road design, road configuration, et cetera, and comments thereto. And I believe that the, our review consultant and the applicants have had a chance to discuss this so that we can narrow it down to issues that the planning board needs to weigh in on.
This afternoon, we had about a two-hour teleconference, including myself and the applicant, his engineer, his attorney, and his traffic engineer. And narrowed discussion points, I think, for this evening, in my letter to maybe eight or 10. And we agreed over the phone to highlight those to the board this evening so we can get input from the board on that. I suggested, and I still do, that they have several consultants here this evening who have traveled from a greater distance than the rest of us, one being Mr. Minor, their landscape architect, Mr. Mills, their, I think he's here, their traffic consultant. I don't know if their architect is here or not. There he is. But perhaps the board, it would be my suggestion that you maybe go through the, those folks first, and then get into the engineering.
Does that make sense? Okay. The floor is yours. Just please, please announce who you are, or give a card up here for our planner, so that she can get the accurate information for the minutes.
We have our wonderful whiteboard.
For the record, I'm Tom Minor with Hawk Design.
Can you make sure that Katrina has that?
His name?
Tom Minor.
Hawk Design.
And what's the company again?
Hawk Design.
Hawk Design. Is there an address and, is there contact information you can give the planner at some point?
Yes. We're located in Sagamore, Mass. I can get you some.
Probably right on the plan.
That's, that's fine. That's right. It's on the plan.
I don't know where I'm going to get, but I could get out of the way here.
You can back up a bit.
Nate, what's best for you, if he stands on the right or left?
You could stand next to Katrina.
Can you see okay?
Thank you.
This is the site plan at one inch equals 40 scale. I went through, and you can see the lighter colored trees. These are, these are all shade, street trees, deciduous trees. The colored trees are various types of flowering trees. These are just representative of flowering trees. It's not that everything's pink out here, just so you know. These darker trees on the border are existing trees, hopefully that we can maintain. And these really dark evergreen trees here are pines and spruces that will get up and provide screening and scale to some of the buildings that are facing the buffering residences, street, and parking. Tried to use as many native materials as I could, both for survivability.
Can you give an example, please?
We have improved native of red maple. We have river birch, American beech, honey locust, sour wood, Norway spruce, white spruce, white pine, pin oak, red oak, and an improved Princeton American elm. So it's quite a variety, and I've scattered them all through, through the, through the site. I have used some bigger materials, some linens, a three-inch caliper, mostly around in this area here to provide additional screening for the neighbors, and in areas that are high visibility as you come in through the entry and some focal points through the, through the site. Evergreens are mostly eight foot high along this area here and in some of these areas. A lot of the other places are six to eight foot high evergreens. This is the blowup of the entry. We're proposing, we've got the existing stone wall here, we're proposing adding on to that, carrying that up with a section of rail fence. We're backing it up with rhododendrons, viburnums, more spruce. We have flowering trees in here, these are, these are type of flowering pear. And then as we come into this area here, I opened it up for the, for the mail station just to give it some variety, opened it up. These are flowering crab apples. We've got evergreen trees buffering the clubhouse and the parking. And if we go into the units themselves, again, I've used, tried to use native material, dog woods, my tea, some rhododendrons, lilac. Again, give a variety of heights, color, evergreen deciduous. And I've added some around the clubhouse revision down here. And I think that's it.
Could you, because some of the butters are here, could you elaborate on any perennial beds or any kind of seasonal gardens anywhere on the property? You've talked a lot about some shrubs, mainly good-sized trees planted throughout. But what do you have for?
Well, the only, the only areas I've used perennials and annuals is in the entrance and the entries to the clubhouse and the individual units.
Ralph, is the, landscape is going to be done by the individual units with any, any pattern or piece? How do you plan on landscaping units? Are you going to give people choices?
Well, we were going to really follow Tom's design.
But Tom's design, okay.
Yeah, it's, you know, we want to try to keep it.
So those green spaces, those are beds in front of the homes, right?
Yeah, and they're based on, they're based on different unit types, too.
Right, right, okay.
We've got, in this case, I've just landscaped three typical units, or three typical buildings.
Right.
So they would vary.
All right, so you're going to deal with.
Right. So if you have a B-style unit, it would be that style landscaping plan and so forth. So we have an A, B, C unit, so an A unit has a specific landscape design, and so there's B and then C.
And landscaping is definitely required with each?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It's not up to the homeowner, it's required?
No, 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 no.
Condominium Association, Werbe Association, so there's certain landscape standards?
Right, because it's all common areas, so it would be maintained by the condominium, not the individual unit owner.
Right, so only perennial, but along the roads or any of the other places, like in the middle there? A little bit.
Common area.
Yeah, are there any, are there any beds there?
I did not show any there.
No seasonal bed?
I did not show any there. There's some shrubs to define this, this pathway system that comes through here. I did provide some seating and possible benching, benches. Technically, this center.
It's all grass.
Yeah, this is all grass, yeah.
I think it's nice in certain areas, in common areas, to have some beds. You know, that's kind of the thing nowadays to, people either do beds or they do, you know, containers in certain areas. I mean, obviously, this is not a commercial or a retail where you use containers, right?
Right, yeah, no, I don't see using containers.
No, no, but I mean, the bed.
Some type of, you know, maybe.
Because beds can be switched out, and they really add to the color and they add to the understory, they give it some, you know, texture going up. That's just something to think about, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I mean, eventually, maybe that would be something that they'll contemplate, because a lot of times with condominiums, you might have like a little garden group that will want to do something in the common area.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So.
And plus, this is face, it's difficult to say now.
Right.
Because there'll be face and construction, so if you actually still now, it's like, it's too soon, you know, to know how it's going to evolve.
And what we tried to do is provide for, if you will, like the large, the large constant landscaping and the buffering, and then obviously in the entrance point where you come in, and around the clubhouse, which would be a public management.
Yeah, screen in the entrance. You mentioned viburnum. Do some of those look at as invasive? Kind of, what kind of viburnum?
These are not invasive. This is the.
All right, these are a different species, okay. I know this is like a zillion species, I know, they're all. Any of these, I know some of the trees you mentioned have wildlife value.
Oh, I have them down here, too.
Does he have it?
Have you kept any of that into account?
Well, it's just a variety. There's a big variety, they've.
Diversity, yeah.
The acorn, you know, the oaks all have the acorns, you know, they have twig masses for the wildlife, and a lot of the flowering, the viburnums have the berries. Crab apples.
Rich, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up now, but.
I do choose.
I know the last time you were talking about, I mean, we have, maybe I should bring it up later, but there was talk about this, you know, stormwater, this mitigation pond, you know, this pond. How come you don't have to use a wetlands mix to kind of make it? Why are you letting it evolve? I mean, why don't you kind of control? Why are you doing shrubs? I mean, you could do osier, you could do, you know, you could kind of plant.
We're not putting any shrubs in the.
No, but there's some small, I mean, a wetlands mix include.
The wetland mix will go in the bottom of that.
Yeah.
Of that.
Cattails, sedges.
It'll be a wetland mix, definitely.
The expensive stuff, yeah.
Okay. It's not that.
With all the different, okay, so there is going to be a wetlands mix in there? To try to establish it, not just let it seed itself from the surrounding area?
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of them around Raleigh where it doesn't look, the wetlands, including our official ones, don't take very quickly. You can enhance it, and you can hurry it up by doing the mix, right?
Yep, the bottom of the pond, the stormwater, wetland pond will get a wetland mix.
And no red osier, dogwoods, or any little, it would just look nice, and that's all. It'll look like a wetland.
Natural look.
And I've done that myself, and it works out really well.
Yeah.
It looks great, and it also attenuates any pollutants. All right, but you're already.
That's what we're planning on, yes.
That's fine.
And just to, to take, take you back to the question that you had about, you know, the beds, these, these are.
Those are what Tom has on his plan, but what we showed with the architectural rendering said you'd get a better vision of what's going to be had.
The way we did that is we, we did the rendering, and then we had Tom annotate what the plants would be, and then we imported the plants in there. So he really directed the way those were landscaped. They look very nice. Does anybody in the audience want to see these things?
I had some questions about the landscaping plans. In particular, along the buffers, the so-called buffer zone, and the house closest to that zone is unit 15. So you've got, your plan shows a row of spruce planted in.
PSB was, yes.
When we were doing the site walk, Rich, I think you indicated that the trees that are there, some of them are going to have to be removed because of.
Two, two trees.
So I'm just wondering how practical it is in light of that, to put a, I mean, is there really going to be room for a row of spruce there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Really? I mean, those are where the, the trees that you're going to cut down are, or?
Yeah.
What, do you think it'll be too close to the house?
Well, just, you know, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
These are narrow, these are not the Norway spruce either, by the way. These are the white spruce that are narrower.
Yeah, I know, the conical ones.
More conical, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think there's plenty of room.
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
I think so, I think so, too.
Because when the, and I tried to describe it at the site walk, but that garage floor is up a little bit, and when we take those two trees down and grade it out, you're going to have, I think it's like 18 feet before you hit the regular vegetation, so we can get trees in there without, without any trouble.
And those trees are on the north side of the house.
That's what I've got to say, it's, you've got a good exposure there, too.
Yeah.
Like you were saying, you've got the good. So it'll get sun all day long.
Yeah.
No, trees won't.
Well, they should be, quite, though. They're back in the.
Like you were saying.
But they'll shelter the houses.
Well, they will get a lot of.
The houses are going to be sheltered from the trees that are there now.
Already there, right.
That hill goes way up, and there's trees on the hill, that's, we're not going to change the, you know, the shadowing on the house by planting trees in.
Is there any room, did you, I think we talked about this on the site visit, the idea of possibly planting some understory plants in that buffer?
I didn't do that, it's, it's something we could do, I'm just hesitant sometime on planting shrubs that, you know, they kind of get lost and don't get maintained, and they die out, they don't, so they end up don't serving any purpose whatsoever, so I wanted to make sure I at least had trees that I know will grow here.
Yeah, because you can embed soils, if you're into natural environment, you run into root masses, sometimes difficult to plant, depending on the soil types. You'd have to look at it first before you could even see whether it's feasible, you know?
There's a lot of brush, there's a lot of brush and stuff up in there now. You're going to have to clear, clear out what's there to plant. I think it's, you know, you're trading.
You don't want to clear.
You're trading something that's existing for, for a new plant.
Yeah, we asked for it at Village Green because there was no understory there, and we were at a place that didn't exist.
Yeah. The other impression I had at the site visit, where the, some of those parking spaces are, it's got a five on it.
This one?
Yeah, it seemed like, it doesn't really look like that from looking at your plan, but when we were there, it seemed like there was some room to plant some trees there to add to the buffer.
If I could just jump in there, because we're going to get on that when we talk about the engineering, planting aspect. Essentially, that five space is going to get moved toward Dodge Road.
Oh, that's right.
And into an area that, out of the existing vegetated area, into that open area, and the turnaround's going to get moved aesthetically, both into that open area. So if you want to save that.
We'll deal with that, right, okay. All right, is any, any other board members coming?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I think that Kurt's idea about another planting bit, maybe on the west side of the island, just as a breakup of adding some color, you've got some at the clubhouse, you've got some in other spots, but right along that.
Right in there.
Along that edge might be nice. Then, the parking lot at the, that is for the golf club, it seems, after you've planted all of this beautifully, and I've reviewed it, the parking lot for the clubhouse didn't get much at all in the parking lot or anything like that.
Right.
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm not adding any landscaping to the golf course parking lot.
You know why? Because you don't want to tear up asphalt and put in vegetated islands.
Yeah, we're already reducing, we're already reducing the amount of parking spaces in that lot by taking.
You don't want to go there now.
That's a better answer.
Yeah.
How many parking spaces are in there?
I think we have 65.
Yeah, if you start from scratch, it would require some of those islands, but you're not.
I mean, we are adding landscaping between, between the area that, that we're using for the residential development and the existing parking lot, and between that and taking those spots out of there, we're, you know, losing quite a few spaces, and if we start adding islands, we're going to be, I think, you know, we'll have a concern of being underparked.
And you do have some enhanced landscaping around the clubhouse.
Yeah, we added some to the clubhouse, we added some within the edges of the parking lot, so there's a lot more landscaping on this plan than there is now.
Than what exists.
There's nothing now. On the, on the.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I wonder if you could describe the plantings for the, so, and we've been calling it, I think, the Village Green area.
That's actually one area where I just, I put a lot of different materials in there, I treated it almost like an arboretum, so it'll have a lot of color and texture and variety. It's, it's, one, two, three, four different types of flowering shrubs, and at least four different types of flowering trees. There's a nice river birch in here. I've reserved this area for a beach, it's not going to amount to much right now, but someday it'll be a, it'll be a huge focal point coming up the road here. I've got honey locusts, elms, and I've tried to put flowering trees where there are spots as you walk up the path.
The honey locust, is that a tall shade tree?
Yes, but it's a very different texture, it's very feathery.
Very light leaves.
Very light leaves.
Turn yellow in the fall.
I'm not a big fan of them, but.
No, well, what's good about it is that it's, it's just a different texture, and they don't get their leaves early in the year, they get them later, and they also drop them early, so, you know, it's just a.
So a little rectangle here, is this a?
That would just be a little, hopefully a picnic area.
Okay.
Seating area.
Okay, thanks. That's fine. Is it Mr. Minor?
Can you get the card?
Yeah, Mr. Minor, the plan board has no more questions.
Thank you.
Do you want to leave?
I'm saying you have to leave.
Saving Ralph's money.
We know you have a long ride ahead of you.
That would be great if I could, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Could you email Tom, could you email the colored ones to the planner?
Oh, I did email, the ones I sent to you were just black and white?
No, I think I did.
I think I did.
The new ones or the old ones?
Maybe the new ones. I can email them to you, Katrina, I think I might have done black and white, but I have color, and I will get them to you from, I'll send you.
I'll get them out to you, and then I'll have the revision that Mr. Jacob has suggested, put on the plan, and send them as well. Probably be easier than me. Yep, no, not an issue.
Thank you very much.
Take care, Tom.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Do you want to put the board up?
Yeah. Might people just place it on the ledge, that might be easier. Or not.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Daniel Mills, I'm a principal engineer with MDM Transportation Consultants. I'm here tonight to summarize the traffic study that we provided earlier in the spring, provided an update on the trip generation characteristics of the site, I gave it those new, new uses, and also looked at the, actually reiterated some of the off-site roadway improvements that were committed to by prior developments that are still being committed to as part of this proposal. Just to orientate you to the site plan, if that's going to go out. Just to orientate you to the site, I'm not sure if that's gonna go out in the past.
Oh, you're not in it.
Just orientate you to the site, I'm sure everyone's familiar with it, Dodge Road, running north-south, bridges up to Annes Road, Dodge Road to the southwest, site encompasses this, this area here. We looked at industry standards, obviously, to determine the trip generation of the site, we looked at existing uses, which are the golf course and a restaurant, and we compared that with the golf course being maintained with forty residences. When this analysis was done, it was a forty-unit proposal, it's now a thirty-six unit proposal, so these numbers are just downwards sliding. We looked at the critical time periods, which is the morning rush hour, evening rush hour, we also looked at the Saturday midday time periods, which are all industry standard timeframes, and of course, we looked at the daily volume, the daily volume, and Saturday daily, daily volume as well.
I don't mean to interrupt, but just because you're talking engineering speak and talking about industry standards and timeframes, can you just give some detail for the butters?
Sure, so the-
What those are?
Yeah.
Because they actually live there, they need to know the-
Sure, the industry standards that we used are the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and is a compilation of, in this case, would be golf courses and restaurants and residences of a similar type of, as a proposal. And because they have all that empirical data, we're able to make projections to what the proposed forty, thirty-six unit development would generate as traffic. We look at the morning peak hour, which is approximately from seven to nine PM, there's a one hour in between that period, that's when the majority of traffic is on the roadways, and because this development is a residential in nature, that's, that this particular development will generate traffic, highest amount of traffic during that time period when people are going to work or school or whatnot. And similarly, the evening peak hour, when people are coming home from their, a home commute, there is some mix of retail in there as well, and restaurants, people frequent those establishments in the evening peak hour, so there's a one-hour time period between four and six, that's really the critical time period that we analyzed, similarly, the Saturday, people coming to and from the houses, running errands and whatnot, you know, retail establishments are open and vibrant, so we look at the Saturday midday peak hour. Again, using the industry standards, we compared the golf course restaurant, the existing use basically, to the proposed build use, and as you can see from this board, week in, week out, these folks are interested in well, so pardon me.
Start us out with room.
Yep, week in, week out, morning peak hour, you have approximately twenty-two vehicle trips total in and out of the site, compared with thirty-eight trips coming in and out of the site, it's an increase of about sixteen total trips in and out of the site. Seems like that's a lot, almost, we're, we're not quite doubling it, but because it's a low volume to begin with, even if you double a low number, it doesn't amount to really a lot, so talking about sixteen trips, it's really about one every four minutes.
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
The, the number's really thirty-six, so that, we're down about ten percent from that-
Right.
Based on, on this, so it's actually an increase of above twelve, right?
Exactly. Don't know if I should present the thirty-six number of the ones that are on my board here, but you get the general idea. It's, it's a, it's a really imperceivable amount of traffic.
Thank you, Rich, but I think-
I appreciate that.
These, these numbers, we're gonna add to it, we're gonna reduce it.
We're gonna reduce it, correct.
Right, if it was forty-four, I wouldn't have said anything.
These numbers aren't for a fifty-five and over.
These are not for a fifty-five and over, these are for-
You're assuming that everyone works Monday to Friday and gets up in the morning, goes to work at eight o'clock or seven o'clock or something.
Yes, yep, and then they return, the, because the restaurant is, is not a part of the proposal, our numbers are actually more in line in the evening with what the existing conditions are, the restaurant would be more of a busier establishment in the evening, whereas the resident would just be coming back from work for the most part, so we're really not seeing any, almost a wash with the, with the proposed development, on a Saturday again, because the, the restaurant, we're seeing actually a slight reduction. So, really, the time period that, if you wanna call it an impact, it would be in the morning peak hour, and it's really, it would be imperceivable, the roadway would still operate, level service A conditions, intersectional, we would operate at level service A conditions. Just to reiterate with regards to the, the off-site improvements that were committed to as part of previous proposal, that is still committed to, okay, the site is up here, I think Dodge Road, travel south, there's an S curve as you're heading towards one thirty-three, there is some commitments that were proposed as part of the previous proposals for the site.
You mean the Wendover?
Wendover project, exactly, they're still committed to as part of this development.
Hasn't the town already-
Well, I was gonna get to that, right, for the most part, the town has completed those improvements as part of a recent project, there are some traffic signs and some pay-up markings that are still outstanding that this develop, that applicant is committed to, we can work with the DVW department and work out exactly the specific locations where they're needed and the specific sign types, but-
Such as?
Yep, morning signs for S curves and speed limit signs, W L center lines, things along that nature to just improve that, enhance that.
I can remember, the highway department had money for strapping roads this summer, I don't even know, did they strike this one with double?
That was not done, I grew up by the time it was built.
Yeah, I don't think so.
They did a bunch of roads in town this summer.
They did, two years ago, they did, I'll just-
They did, okay, so it needs to be redone, okay, so I think that's useful.
Well, I think that Wendover's gonna widen the shoulders of the road.
Yeah, but that's the town already took the shoulders into the right of way, yeah.
Yeah.
Was there any comments from the board or your consultants at this time?
Can drive out there and look, have you, I looked at feasibility, but it was difficult because of who owned the land to cut into the, you know, to help with, you know, some of the blind spots of visibility. You just can't go outside of the town right away, and you can't start excavating where someone's land is. I mean, that was, Larry, I don't know, is there any, is the town adequately maintaining, do they, we have a baseline for cutting vegetation? Within the right of way, the town's pretty good about doing that on this street, I mean, 'cause, well, I mean, that's something that needs to be done in the baseline, you're not generating a hell of a lot more trips a day.
No, that's, that's the, that's the-
And that's the bottom line, it's not, I mean, from what's already there at the end, so, I think enhanced signage on a dangerous road is good.
Yeah.
All right, any comments on that?
Yeah, if the board has no more, I wanna speak to, to this item, which I made a, you know, separate subsection of my report.
Can you cite it, please, 'cause the board can look with it?
Well, their report was March seventh, twenty twelve, could you put your trip generation chart back up there again, please, Dan?
And your reference here, October twelfth report, right?
Yeah, October twelfth, on page twelve, go to page twelve. At the bottom of the page, yeah?
No, there's no page number.
Oh, okay.
Traffic comments, Part D?
Yeah, it's traffic comments, Part D.
What numbers?
Item three.
All right, so that's on the top of the following page on traffic. All right.
I wanted to clarify perhaps an overemphasis on the, what, the way I wrote my report is that being a seventy-three percent increase, where in fact, it's, maybe now it's a seventy percent increase, but as Dan highlighted, the volumes are still, you know, quite low, going from twenty-two to maybe thirty-four, thirty-six now in the morning peak hour, and then I think all the rest of the peak hour and weekday dailies, Saturday dailies are, you know, well within line, if not equal to what's, what he has given you as the existing conditions. So, I wanted to say that that, I maybe overemphasized that a bit, and I'm satisfied with the presentation being made tonight, it's not being a tremendous impact. Under item four, I'm going to have to dig out, probably from my files, I don't know if Katrina can find, but Patrick Williams says he has it in his files, the Wendover S curve proposal, and the board should, should have that. What we talked about today on the phone was splitting those improvements up that they're committed to make, it should be part of your conditions if you approve this, that they, they are compelled to do that, to split the improvements into two sections, one is that they would install the signage on that improvement plan immediately, and then two, they would do the roadway improvements if there is any more to be done, and we've already discussed it, probably most of them have been done by now already, they would do that, and in part of their roadway improvements on site, but they would have a condition or a limit of thirteen units, get it, get it done before they pull their thirteen CO, which is about a third of the way through their development, and they, they were agreeable to have a condition such as that. Everybody understand?
Yeah, that's clear, that's clear.
Also, under four, in the last paragraph on the previous report in standard type, I had suggested that they should compare this to age-restricted, to the age-restricted Wendover proposal, I retract that request, after thinking about it, talking with Dan today over the phone, I don't think, as we've already said tonight, that that would serve any particular useful purpose, because it's, it's not that, what we're comparing it to is golf courses and restaurants, where it's, where it's, so I don't think that's necessary to do. I did suggest to them that, they, they don't give you, but if they did, it would look, look better, I think, in that when the restaurant has events now, you probably have some peak hours at the start and the end of those events that may even exceed the peak hours that you've given us, so-
Oh, without a doubt, yeah.
And, and maybe at the end of those events, all the drivers aren't fully in control of everything. So I, I think that, you know, I mentioned to them, if they, they wanted to throw that out there tonight, they did, they didn't, so I'm throwing it out to you, I think that further, you know, gives, gives credence to their figures. I think that's all I wanted to, to add.
Does the board have any more comments on the traffic?
Well, I just have one, one question, that the data that you get, is it from country club developments like this, or two-family develops, developments in general, I mean, is there a separate set of data for, for this type of development?
Not the mix of a golf course with a residential component, I mean, people generally go about their typical day, whether they're on a golf course, whether they're in a, you know, suburban neighborhood, if they're, it's-
Multi-family.
It's multi-family, yeah, it's multi-family, it's not saying, it's not single unit, not treating it as a single unit, but multi-family, correct.
So, okay, well-
Yeah.
Because you could get more retirees in, in this kind of development, you could get people who spent winters in Florida or something.
Exactly, you would, this is a conservative estimate, if you will, you know, you have that type of aspect to this particular community, the likely go, the trip generation would likely even go less than what we're presenting here.
No, I think the key point, and Larry brought it up too, but the key point is you're starting on a low number.
Yeah.
That's the key point here, you know, not generating three hundred trips a day, you're starting it, and it's only peak hours, I mean, a lot of it's just ambient pass-through traffic, as you know, that road is used to pass through to Bodyville quite a bit, I mean, a lot of that traffic has nothing to do with any of this, you have a lot of pass-through now that the bridge has done, right?
Yeah.
Georgetown, the development in Georgetown.
Yeah, and you get to Georgetown, it's a shortcut. And it's too bad, 'cause there are some really low speed limits, and people are always in a hurry to get to Triton, I mean, there's that curve at the end of the development that says should be fifteen, and people go thirty, you know? And that has to do with, the town just has to enforce that, so, and that, this isn't gonna impact that. All right, Larry, you want it?
Nothing else.
Well, now you want it, all right, you're dismissed, huh?
Ding ding ding, huh?
Clearing the room.
Thank you very much, that was useful, I'm glad we're getting to this point.
Depends on how far it is, how far does he have to go?
Bradford Tavern. Gonna generate another trip.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Larry. All right, all right. I have a wooden board, I don't think it's gonna sit up.
It's one on the clip, it's pretty heavy.
Yeah.
Feel free to put it right here, I don't, I don't really need to see it.
It's because I was mounting this stone samples, so that's why I wanted to make it out of wood. But I, again, we took the time to work with Tom on the landscaping and had him review the renderings, and then we placed the landscaping within that, and after the last meeting, we took some time to shift the garage doors to a more- Did you say review work first? Yes, I'm sorry, Peter Sandors, Phoenix Architects. Thank you. We've taken the time to go back in and revisit the garage doors, using the more carriage house door by Wayne Dalton with hardware, so it looks like a more traditional, same with the-
Fits the design better.
Yeah, it does, same with our choice of siding colors, going with natural tones and grays and very light greens, trying to go with stone.
How many stone samples are there?
There's four, there's four different samples.
Really looks like two.
It does, and I think, as you know, there's variation, Anthony actually brought me boxes of it, but we had to, we had to just choose some.
Where's the stone gonna go?
We're thinking of it, a little bit on each, sometimes it happens in a gable, sometimes it happens a little bit low. I was gonna ask that, I thought it was a stupid question. But it's-
Doesn't mean it wasn't a stupid question.
Thank you, Rich.
I'm looking, I like that better than Ralph's idea, 'cause I could just think of the Fells Way in Songas or something.
Hey, hey.
Everybody will love that one.
Do you want to just, just show it to the back of the room?
Oh, yes.
And I have, I still have concern about the vinyl siding, I think vinyl siding is temporary.
We also, I also, because that's only shown on the J channel, I wanted to show you a full corner board, so you can see that we were going with the traditional package, at least we're not just J-channeling, and we didn't have room for it on the board, but these are, these are more pieces of those materials.
Doesn't help, in my opinion.
David, what's your concern with vinyl siding?
Yeah, what's your-
It's a temporary, it's a temporary material, it lasts ten, twelve years, it gets damaged easy.
But David, that people do vinyl siding all up at town, in both commercial and residential applications.
My good, my good clients don't do vinyl siding.
Well, that's not-
What would you suggest?
I would rather see cement board.
Yeah, but then you have to raise the prices of the unit.
Yeah.
I don't know that cement board is that much more expensive than vinyl.
Well, it's, the board, the, the, the siding isn't, but it's the, this AZAC trim that goes along with it, and the installation's very expensive.
If you wanna use AZAC trim.
I don't think we can dictate siding, because it's a choice of every single person in the town who has a residence as to what kind of siding they wanna use, there's good vinyl siding, people who make it look nice with the great break metal people and so forth, and there's other ones where it looks crappy, which is in your mind, where it can look really bad.
I have the same feeling.
But there's other ones.
I'm not gonna broach for vinyl.
But I mean, I think-
And I think because we're, this is a special approval process, that we do have control of it.
I think we do.
We had control on the rest of it.
Not the siding of a house.
Well, it's not a single-family home, it's a, it's a multi-family development that requires a special permit.
Architect, yeah, but I think on the exact materials.
It's architectural, designed actual materials, you really, the jurisdictional value is arbitrary and capricious, because it's, it's a dictative personal opinion versus actual architectural styles.
You could say that.
Yeah, and you can, you can have-
No, no, I understand it, I understand.
You can have an argument back and forth about the benefits and the advantages and disadvantages of vinyl siding. People make that choice for various reasons, there are some very, very high-end homes in this country that have vinyl siding on them, and, and so, and you could find them, so I think you, it's an argument that goes nowhere, it's a circular argument.
Well, but I think that with the cement siding, you do create a more visually, more expensive look than with vinyl. If my clients had a choice, they'd go cement siding or stained wood, I mean, I, but we're using a lot of cement siding now, because it's got a longer lifetime.
Ask the people that cut it.
Well, they may have a shorter lifetime, but I do have a good look. I know it's true.
Could I ask a question?
I agree with you. My dad has.
Are you going to allow, the people can pick their own siding? So their voice.
Colors.
Or colors. There's going to be different colors on the two units and different stone on the two units. Well, the stone, where the stone meets.
Four units. It's four units. What if it's that?
No, she means when they join, when you have one whole thing.
Oh, oh, no, no. Each building would be one color. We're not going to separate them.
Could you picture that?
Well, if one person has a choice and the other person.
No, it's like some people saying, you know.
First one in gets to pick the color.
Well, I mean, I actually think you can make the choice.
Yeah, that's possible. You know, a lot of the spec, you know, it's.
Your choice may be better than most people.
Yeah, these are some nice colors.
Well, I have no problem with the color choice.
I just think the technology is better now. I mean, it's made for this climate. In the past, it used to crack in the cold. I mean, it's just gotten better.
Well, there's benefits as well, because you don't have to worry about peeling paint and people not painting. And it's a condominium, so they maintain it.
Cement siding.
No, cement siding you do not, but cement siding is.
You can pre-paint. Cement comes in different colors, or it can be painted. But I'm just saying, the technology is better than it was.
I don't think there are many vinyl houses in the neighborhood.
There isn't.
None.
Right, but it doesn't prohibit anyone from in the neighborhoods from doing that. I mean, you can't prohibit a neighborhood from going in. And it's becoming quite common.
And it's not necessarily, it does not. If you asked an appraiser.
Oh, it doesn't impact.
It doesn't impact appraisals. And that's what you're worried about. It doesn't.
I'm thinking about the, just the look of the neighborhood is what I'm thinking.
It doesn't, you don't even see it unless you're close up.
Yeah, I mean, could you, from the street, can you really tell? I don't know if you could tell.
You can't anymore. In the past.
If you do the trim package like that, it's very difficult to tell.
And the trim is crucial, and the break metal, just the weight, that's crucial, the trim, like you were saying.
And you have to come into this development to see these units. You know, be surrounded by these big trees.
It's better than peeling paint.
I agree.
I mean, it has to be, you know, it has to be clean. They can get mossy, but so can wood, you know. Depending. Go ahead.
A lot of that type is seamless without the seam. And I would imagine that it's a peak, or one piece would have seams.
It's a lot of.
We had, we had a house in the let, guy next door put vinyl. It had a seam every six feet.
Now they have long, now they offset it. You got a 16 footer. The seams now don't look as bad as they used to, because they used to be all lined up and look. It's definitely, it's not like it was.
It's better.
I agree with you. It's terrible when it's all seen.
In these units, there's a lot of short walls, so.
Right, it's a 16 footer, yeah, so you're going to have limited seams.
Very limited.
And they can bury them in the corner, so you don't, yeah.
I've got a fucking stop.
It's just gotten, I think it has a wrap that's probably justified, but not as much now, that's all. By the time you're done, it's not, it's a maintenance thing. It's not super cheap either.
No.
He's holding a contract file.
He got some insulated value on it.
Well, I agree with David, but I mean, I think what he's saying is makes sense, but I don't know if we can actually dictate that.
I think it's a better value to go the other route.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of think that too. Long-term.
Are all the brackets and details going to be vinyl too?
No, they'd be, those would be bought in a, probably a Fightpon.
Okay.
She buys bits of, there's a couple of manufacturers, but it comes in a.
Fightpon, you can't tell the difference.
No, it's a composite high density.
Five months.
You got to paint it.
Yeah, that's the only thing with Fightpon. You just have to paint it by month.
But you'd never, you'd think it was turned into a wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I know a lot of wooden ones use those when they create funny features.
That's right.
I don't know, because my neighbor used it.
It's amazing.
I don't see that you could tell the difference between the four kinds of stone. Might only have two kinds of stone.
Well, you know, when you look at the larger panels and when you lay them out, you really can tell the difference because of the colors.
They're only using it as an accent here and there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. But I'm still concerned. All right, we have a difference in that. So keep going.
I think you just need to go on record.
I'm on record.
Well, he said he's not going to vote for it. There's no room for error, since we only have four members on the board.
Well, that's why we're discussing it. It gives time for people to think and do research. We're not voting tonight on it, so. Now, you have anything else?
It specified a Thermatru front door, a captain's door with a lit top, very traditional as well. What else did we want to talk about? I get, I would say.
What is a captain's door?
It's where you have like a six-panel light and the panels below.
Sort of cottage door.
Exactly. Yep, that's right. And dark asphalt roof shingles, which I think look right in this kind of building.
What weight?
I don't have to ask my boss that. What are we thinking?
What do you usually?
What do you, what do you use on?
Ico.
How many years?
What weight?
Thirty year, I think. The acts are thirty.
David, what is the, I'm sorry to interrupt. The town common project, what are they using for the siding?
Town.
On Main Street, Village Green, whatever you call it, yeah.
Kenny's not here.
No, 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 the 24-unit development on Main Street.
Where Nugget is revised plans, he may have already.
Around the Village Green?
Village Green.
A guy just closed on it.
It's confusing names.
We'll have to ask him. We don't really know for sure.
We don't know?
We'll be discussing that later.
I'm a person that likes shingles to look just like shingles and not try and look like shakes.
Shades or something, yeah.
All right, any other questions, David?
I don't know. What else are you going to tell us?
I think I've covered it, unless you guys have questions.
I like the overhead doors, because they become so prominent.
Any other questions from the board forms? In terms of our renderings, elevations, besides the.
Do we have copies of these?
We have, we have the original color renderings. We have the landscape pictures. I do think you sent the colored ones.
We can use updated ones if you want. These are updated with the new doors.
I think I, because remember there was pictures and they took the trees out of some, so that you could see the front of the buildings. There were some without trees, some with trees.
Those were the, those were.
The originals.
Are they better revised?
I'll email them to you and you can forward them along.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question or two.
Sure. What are all the trim boards, the sofas and faces? Are they, are they vinyl or are they PVC?
Yes, they'd be vinyl as well, yeah.
And are you committed, Ralph, to two separate doors for the two car garages? No single garage doors?
No, I like the two, the two doors.
Much better.
Yeah.
Because you have that big door, it looks like somebody's got their mouth open in there.
Yeah, I like the two doors.
That was a good image.
Been used before.
Any other questions? Because I want to move it along here with Larry and get to the meat of the engineering.
You know what, I'm just going to.
All right, let's.
How do you feel about them?
Peter, excuse me.
David can take the vinyl home.
You can take this.
Do you want me to take it?
Yeah, I can.
You want to keep it?
Do you want to keep it?
Yeah, I'll leave it. We'll take it.
We'll take it personally.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'll get this, I'll get the plans.
Is this another dismissal?
Do we need these anymore?
Yes, he's dismissed.
Do you want to keep these?
He only has to go to wing.
All right, do we need the space?
Larry, you have the floor.
Just in case you, just in case you want us to bring a plan up then.
Mr. Williams, you have the floor with Mr. Graham.
Sorry.
We will probably share in some feedbacks to the board on this letter of mine dated October 12, 2012. And what I'm going to do is just skip into the letter to talk about what we talked about today as far as things which we agreed that the board should either one, be aware of, should take some action upon, or just flat go over.
And that's just Larry, just briefly. Describe some of this overlaps of work that was done in the past for Wind River. And also, this is, this reflects your review of the latest revised, revised plan.
Yes, yes.
And in boldface, whether or not the planning board should come, where you're asking for comment or not, in boldface here.
It can go up to standard text or in boldface. The standard text is a repeat of my earlier letter, so that you don't have to go back and forth to it. The boldface is basically this latest review and for the comments.
And can the abutters, do they have, they can have access to this?
Sure.
From the office, if anybody wants to drop it. Okay, public records.
Okay.
Feel free. Do you want a copy to follow along with?
That's okay.
So if you go to A, General Comments, Item 5, that's the thing that I thought that the board should reflect the ones that I brought up, was the signage for the development they submitted in their original package, some maintenance by levens of the signings they proposed for both presidential, which is right here, residences of the Rally Country Club and Rally Country. I don't know if the board recalls or remembers that these are in there. But I think the board should essentially, you know, take some action, either accepting these, there you go, accepting, accepting these, subject to them complying with the sign by law as far as square foot area and height and so forth. Just, you know, you've been silent on responding to this, so I thought we should bring it up, and you should approve or disapprove or modify or whatever you want to do.
All right, now that we have, now that we have some color and some rendering.
Now, those signs, according to section 8.4 of your sign by law, the by law applicable signs, requires that no sign be taller than eight feet from the ground up. And those will be, what are they, Ralph, they start like six, between six and eight feet off the ground? And then in addition to that, in an outlined district, the area.
Does that already exist?
There is a sign there, yes.
Does that quarter of arms already exist? This thing?
Oh, it's Rob's quarter of arms.
Is that you?
No, it's hard design. It's the design we came up with, yeah. I don't think it's on the existing sign that's there, no.
What is it, Scotland? Any comments on, if we can, I don't think we need to, I want us to nail this down right this second.
All I want you to do, or suggest that you do, is that you accept what's been submitted, or, you know.
But clearly you have to make it subject to your.
It's a concept. I mean, it might be changed a little bit, but you wouldn't expect to see, you wouldn't expect to see a square sign or a triangle.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind the concept. I mean, I think.
I think the granite post one looks better than the.
The golf course, we've placed them both on the, on the plan as well.
There's one in the entrance island, and one at the new.
One in your hands on the entrance.
At the new entrance. Right, that's.
Of course, I mean, that makes sense.
Are they illuminated?
No.
I see, I see one in the little island that goes.
That's correct.
Right.
That's all with the granite post. Right. And there's one, the existing sign is here, which is just, I don't know, 50 feet or so before the entrance to the existing parking lot.
Probably on your plan, but it is known, the landscape kind of plan.
It's existing.
No, it's existing, yeah.
And we might want to have a little bit of discussion about that. I was up at the course the other day, and this sign here, the one for the golf course, it kind of arms out a little bit. It looks like kids have driven by and hit it with the stick or something.
Something hit. Snowplow.
Oh, okay.
They right up that sign.
The snowplow. So, yeah, we may want to revisit that. But that sign set back five hundred. To meet the by law, we can't be on someone else's property. That sign is in the road. Our sign will not be in the road, so it's going to be back further.
I was going to say.
And it will be prior to the entrance.
If you could make it more compatible with this other one.
Is that similar with the posts?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
I think it can be tweaked. I agree with you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, you know. Just want to make them somewhat differentiate from each other.
You could do that with coloration or change.
So basically, we'll use the signs.
Larry's point is the general, the concept also, it has to adhere to the dimension, it has to adhere to the signage by law.
Yeah.
Which is 12.
Which, which, that's fine. Jill's aware of that. All right.
Continuing under item six, the one, two, three, four, six, bold-faced paragraph letter from the Highway Department. And I said in the conclusion of that, the board can include a condition which covers damage to existing local area roadways as a result of the construction and equipment traffic. I think essentially, you're going to have to make that limitation to, somewhat to the median area of the Dodge Road of the proposed project.
Makes sense.
And we've done that before, so that clarification I wanted to make tonight.
And this is still, just so Ralph knows, this is still being sent out for further comments from town boards? Because it's kind of new, everything's kind of new, okay?
Well, that was a general question we talked about today. We weren't sure if it had been done. And it has gone out to other departments.
No, and we're going to ask for the copies. And I think the board needs to decide whether to send around the.
Digital or full size?
Eleven by 17s or full sizes. I have heard from several departments, and they do want full sizes. I think there's some departments that would rather small, but.
Eleven by 17s.
Could you just give me the number? I'll have them fed us.
Yeah, I just don't want to have, I just don't want to have 20 copies around sitting in the office that are not needed by departments. I want to know what.
Is that okay?
You let me know and I'll send it.
Special order and.
Just call Jill's coffee shop and I'll get it to you.
And then your Paul Rich's coffee shop.
That's what I do.
Okay, sorry, Larry.
Okay, going on to item seven, in the same subsection, general. The residential area, open space area, I'm sorry. They show on the landscape plan, a couple of benches in the looped area and a couple of benches in the other larger area. And Rich is going to update his plan to comport with the landscape plan showing those sitting areas. They also both show a gazebo. And the gazebo they're proposing, as my letter said, perhaps to use it as a place to have a small structure, which would house their power and valving and controls and so forth for their septic system. And I mentioned a few other things, walk width and walk construction material, which they're going to add in. I don't know if the board just wants to weigh in on what they're thinking. Lighting along the path, we talked about that today. They do not want to light it. They don't want to encourage people to go in there at night anyway. The development of a playing field or tot lot, and their response today to me over the phone was, they're going to have fields, but they don't want to align them. They don't want to differentiate them as, for any particular small sport or larger sport. So we, as the board has talked about this throughout the permitting process, I thought that you should give them precise direction now as we're trying to close this out, of a few of these things. If you're satisfied with the benches, if you want to see any more detail, and when you want to see it on the gazebo. If you're okay with not lighting the path, I am. Walk width and walk construction.
I don't, I don't think the path has to be lit.
No, I don't.
There's enough ambient lighting around the place. David, gazebo design? You want to weigh in on that? A gazebo is a gazebo, I mean. I like the fact.
It could be anything.
You know what may help us have a plan to look at? Because I don't think.
Well, the gazebo is located here, and we purposely.
In the common area, yeah.
Yeah, we purposely placed it there, because the septic system tanks have pumps in them, and they have controls. And we're going to need a place to have those controls inside with an alarm on it and close enough to the system so that you can test it.
Something that's tasteful, rather than just a metal.
It will be inside the gazebo, so that it'll be hidden. There'll be a panel, you'll be able to open it up. And that's why it's there. And it would be a typical gazebo, except a portion of it would be solid. So it would be open on, you know, like 60% of it, and the back would be, would be closed.
Okay, now can you elaborate a little bit on this tot lot thing?
Yeah, it's not a tot lot. What I said was, we have a, the septic system here that will be mowed, and it will be flat like a field. And if kids want to play catch, they can go play catch. It's big enough to do a lot of things, but we don't want to make it a soccer field. We don't want to put swing sets on it. It's an area where if people want to go out and play catch, they can do that.
Does it have, does it have vents? Does it have air, does it have vents? Are there vents on this septic though?
There's a vent on the septic, but it's not going to be here.
Where is it?
I believe we're going to put it out through the top of the, um, gazebo.
Mr. Presby, right?
Yeah.
They still have a high vent requirement, a high and a low, or did they go back to just two lows now?
I think they have two lows.
I think so too. I think they gave her the high vent, okay.
All right, so you can, so there's no problem in keeping this thing nicely grassed over? This, this player? That can be maintained as a nice grassy field.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, it's fine.
Which it should be. That's, that's what you, you want.
Okay. What's the approximate dimensions again on it?
Uh, two fifty by two hundred, something like that.
So where are you going to put the soccer goals?
[laughing].
Yeah, it's.
So it's, it's pretty big.
It's like two hundred by.
Larry's saying it's small field.
Two hundred by a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty.
Yeah, okay, so it's fairly good size.
It'd look much better as a field.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Or what, let the grass grow high?
No.
He means not to have stuff in.
Just the grass, big grass area.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't want a lot.
Jungle gym will look like the fountain.
Yeah.
No, we're not doing that, people can do it in their own yard.
Can I ask, do, does the board want to see, is there, getting their septic system done and beginning construction? They're going to have to get their septic system in there as soon as, you know, as soon as it go online.
That's the first thing that's going to have to happen.
I mean, do you want to have a condition if you approve this that they submit the gazebo design to you just for preview or just?
Why not?
Why not?
Well, you're going to have to do it, so I think.
Well, then you'll be able to tweak it and know what dimensions you.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
To accommodate your controls and.
We'll, we'll submit it prior to construction.
That's fine, yeah, okay.
And, uh, I guess lastly in there, since we talked today, at walk width and walk construction, have you guys given that any consideration?
Yeah, four foot wide.
Okay.
Um, and we're thinking pavement.
About two minutes of concrete, okay. I think that's a, I think that's a good selection because you don't have to worry about grass growing up and going into it.
No, no, I like that, you can brush it. It's a go-to now. Keep going, Larry.
Okay with that? Uh, seven going to part B, part B, uh, item six. The exclusive use areas are shown on the WNS plans. They show basically just lines, uh, that go from the front, from the street all the way to the back, showing exclusive use around, uh, the unit. Uh, we talked quite a bit today about this and pros and cons about this. And I'll let them state their position on it and, uh, you know, first I'll state mine, which did not meet with their approval. But I have said, uh, along that the backs of the units where you have patios or decks, at least on-ground patios and decks, that I felt that there should be some minimal amount of separation for privacy in those immediate exclusive use areas of each unit. In the front, no delineation where it separates, in the back beyond that, perhaps no delineation where it separates. And that said, I think they could take the exclusive use area lines off of, uh, Rich's plans. Uh, where we differ, uh, myself and Ralph, is that he does not feel the need to have any separation at all in the backs of the units between those kind of private, uh, recreational passing areas. So that's where, that's where we ended today and, uh, we, so we just kind of lock horns in that particular area. It's up to you, of course.
Mr. Graham has given his, before I, uh, Ralph, my opinion, you want to give your?
Yeah, um, we were talking about, you know, a separation.
Do you want to point out just?
Yeah, well, basically, he's, he's talking about a separation between the units, um, or the proposed deck or patio to give the independent individual units some type of, um, privacy. I, I, I differ with him because, um, you know, the view, I don't want to obscure the views of the course. I want to make sure that everybody has a beautiful view, the course is gorgeous, especially on, on the ones right around the seventh, eighth, and ninth. And if you look left, I don't want to be looking at a fence or a wall or anything like that. If it's on a deck that's elevated, you know, a lot of those units are walkouts, so the decks off the main level would be, um, you know, say eight feet, nine feet off the ground. I, I don't want to have a, a deck with some type of fencing or barricade between the units, I just, I don't like the way that looks.
And here's a good example, let me just interrupt you for a second. Like, if you are in unit twenty-eight and there's a wall here, you lose your view of the whole ninth hole. It gets, it gets blocked. Um, and now, that's not the case for every unit, however, um, you know, we still think that it's not, not necessary and, uh, you know, you do get some, some view blockage, um, in any case when you do that.
Right, and, and the other thing too is, you know, privacy on a golf course is limited. So, you know, even if you're on the deck and you're sunbathing, people are going to be driving their golf carts by and looking anyway. So I, I don't see the need to have privacy on these patios or decks and I, I just think it's, uh, it's more of a.
But it'll only be illusory pri, privacy too, because you can see how the decks are actually separated. So you do a physical separation, you just don't have visual separation and someone can be five feet off your deck on the grass. So it's just, there really isn't much gained by putting in a visual obstruction within the, within the, um, separation between the two units, it just doesn't gain you anything at all.
Could you build your decks in such a way that the deck should be more private than a normal deck?
We kind of did for condo development because they don't have butts.
Closer together on the balusters or, or something or?
There's some jogs near the building, you know.
Well, yeah, some of them are, some of them are jogged, that's a good point, some of them are jogged, so, you know, some might be out further than others depending on the floor plan.
My opinion on this is normally I would do that, but I'm not thinking of it on a golf course, you bring up a good point.
I know, I just changed my opinion based on what you said today, I agree with Larry all the way through this thing and.
But, yeah, but I think that if it becomes a problem, then you're going to address the problem of the privacy. I mean, I can understand Larry bringing it up, but.
If the condominium owners in the end decide and opt for some sort of a structural element that creates privacy, they're going to, they're going to do it, they'll put up something.
Because if somebody brings it up to you, Ralph, then, and you're going to explain to them the reason why they're missing one.
Yes, of course.
And they either going to agree with you or say, can you build me a little rhino-sided wa, no, no rhino, but.
Well, that's another point, I mean, no matter what you try to construct, it's not going to be attractive.
It can be, it, in limited amount, it can be done okay, I mean, I've done.
Yeah, but there's a visual and a physical.
If it gets really big, if it gets really big on the division and it goes out over ten feet, then you've got something.
Well, and that's it, you have a deck that sticks out ten feet, you want to make it a ten-foot wall and then, you know, you're eight feet in the air with the deck and then this sticks up another six feet, so now it's, you know, you get the green monster there.
And you're shading some B at the same time.
Yeah, and, yeah, and then if there is a, if there is a, a, a blockage of view of, you know, let's say for instance, the ninth fairway, then that's going to bring up a whole other set of problems with the association and people, um.
No, that can't be.
It just, that's, that was my reason, it wasn't to, to lock horns, it was because it, it just.
I think, as Larry commented this, I think we'll pass it out, I, I tend to, uh, I was talking about quality of life and privacy and I agreed with Larry in the initial discussions that Larry and I've had about this and looking. But after hearing this, I, I tend to agree with Rich and Ralph and kind of wait and see if it, if it evolves and it becomes problematic, it's a condominium association issue.
Could you do something differently on the ones that aren't facing the golf course?
I don't want to get into that, that's up to the con, that's why the people buy things and complain about stuff. If they don't like it.
Don't complain about it.
If they don't like it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Again, you get, we have a similar thing, we, we get paths going around the back of every unit, so it's, it's not super private.
It's right, it is pretty, I mean, it is pretty. So you don't want to.
Yeah, people who want privacy aren't going to buy one of these.
It's a good point. All right, next.
Uh, going on to item C, uh, item C three, uh, on the second bold paragraph, that's been resolved, but I wanted to let the board know that they conceded that running the sidewalk out, they had stopped it at the mail station, but they're going to run it on out to Dodge Road and place a waiting platform out there, a waiting area for the children, for the bus stop. Great. Continuing on that, uh, item nine, C nine. Um, I have suggested that they run the slope granite curb in a bit further than they're showing on their plan. I just think it would be a nice touch to finish out that, uh, that narrowing entrance way and essentially to run it on past the, uh, mail station parking area. At the same time, we talked about that, we talked about how much landscaping that you just went over with Tom Miner, that they have between the entrance road and the parking area for golf. I, I actually think it's over landscaped and, uh, kind of the way we left it today is, uh, is Ralph, uh, I, I believe said, Jesus, or I said anyway, that I'd be willing to give up a few of the trees and the landscaping for, uh, the granite curb to run a little bit further. So I think that fall's still up in the air, but I don't know if the planning board would want to, you know, chime in on that.
Just, just so people know, right now, we have the granite curb coming in and ending here, coming again and ending here and this island is granite curb and then for the rest of the, the site, um, it's, uh, kid cut burn.
What asphalt? Is this vertical or slope granite, did you say slope?
Kid cut.
No, no, but the granite, is that?
Granite slope, slope granite.
Even on the island?
Yes.
It looks okay.
You want it so that you don't, you don't have people taking out tires if they.
It's friendly.
Yeah, it's friendly.
It is more okay.
It lasts longer too.
So if you take out some trees, how much more granite?
Cheaper to buy it to.
Well, I, I had suggested run on past the, uh, just, in, just past the parking area for the.
No, I think you should continue on, I don't like where it breaks and goes into asphalt, but it doesn't need, you can kind of have a natural break there. Yeah, it's, it's a good trade-off, I mean, I'd like to see it go all the way.
Yeah.
Makes for a better entrance.
You'd have to take out, you know, some, that's, well, how many trees, I mean, you know. Well, you know, the, the thing that I was looking at too was, you want a nice entrance, you, you have some landscaping between the road and the parking, but you're not, you're not landscaping between the parking and a residence or the road and a residence, it's pavement, you know, on each side, it's, it's traffic on each side. So I think you need some landscaping and some buffering there, but you're not trying to totally block it and that plan has a, has a lot, if you look at that plan, it has a lot of.
Yeah, it really does, I mean, you know, initially.
Three separate rows and.
Initially, when that, uh, entrance is landscaped, it would be gorgeous, but in a couple of years, it's, it's going to really overgrow.
You know, you get to where you have to start cutting stuff out.
Yeah, stop pulling stuff out, so, you know, I think if we, if we can thin it out a little bit, put the granite curb in and make it really tasteful entrance, I, I agree with Larry.
Better entrance if it goes all the way. All right.
Well, just have Tom, Tom draw up the new one.
Yeah, he'll do it, he'll do it. Next.
Just in that, under, under D is the traffic comments and we've been, we've been over that. Under E, E two.
E two?
E two.
E?
E two, yeah. Okay, E two and E three. We've talked quite a bit about this today. Rich, do you have one of your plans?
I do.
You can throw out there.
Now I've done it.
Right, I didn't have my chicken scratching on there.
Okay, right, right now, they have a, going up through the center of the drive B loop, they have a single water line.
Single water line is here.
Sewer line and they have a drainage line which is, which is the lower, lower one. My initial concern with that at, before our conversation today was that they're going to have some pretty long service, service laterals and, uh, service connections for the water and the sewer and, uh, we're going to run over under the other utilities and under drive B and under the curb and under some landscaping. And I had suggested perhaps that they, uh, run separate lines on each side of drive B. After discussion today, uh, I'm willing to concede that those single lines are okay. It's going to be up to the condominium association, I doubt we're going to have any problems with the sewer. If there's any issues with the water lines, it'll probably be with the services and, uh, if that happens, it's going to be up to them to fix them and if it means tearing up the road or drive B, the sixteen-foot drive, then that's what they're going to have to do. In some cases, those services for water are at a hundred feet at the backs, which is not terribly excessive. I just put one in for myself, it's two hundred feet long, so, you know, it's not, with, with materials all we have today. It's not something that, if I had designed, I might have designed it another way and if my client would have told me, what are you doing to me, he probably would have changed it back.
The piping, the caskets are better and everything, you know, the way they join piping is better.
You know, I, I just wanted to bring that up because it's in here, it took up a lot of space, but I'm, I'm willing to back off of that, let them do what they had proposed.
So what, what we agreed to do is slide the stuff up so that the utilities are more in the center, um, so that we have an equal distance, um, so that we, we shorten up some of these longer services on the, on that side of the road, the water services.
All right.
Okay.
All right, next.
So that's, uh, that's those.
Those should be shown on a revised plan before it's sent to the water department.
We give comments?
Do you want me to hold off on sending it?
No, I don't really want to.
When do you think you finish that?
I, I would be surprised if they commented on that. I mean, they, their focus was more on, uh, the connections out at the, at the street and the loops. I mean, if they, if they made that comment, which I would be surprised, we could just respond to it, so.
Well, and here you're suggesting that we ask the water department, all those certain things, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, submit the plans, they, they should, they should look at their individual points of interest.
Okay.
We, we shouldn't have to ask them to look at their water lines, the water.
Okay.
I, I just, I want to avoid making another round of changes and send them around, it's going to get, uh, crazy with the amount of plans that are out there.
Right.
I don't think it's necessary.
And Katrina, if you could, particularly with the fire department, you get a copy of my letter because I, I made some recommendations of where to move hydrants to, what they've suggested that they would do and, and if the fire department sees that, they're not going to ask them to tweak it and move it another ten feet.
No, it's important the fire department to know where we're at.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're, they're informed, we have to deal with that.
Okay.
Maybe afterwards we could go through and you could just, uh, make sure I know what's pertinent still? Because there are some of these things that, that, um, that you've talked about earlier today with Rich that aren't pertinent anymore, right?
Well, not necessarily.
We've either agreed to.
They've agreed to make a change.
Changes.
Yeah, but if it's going too fast or whatever, summarize it with Larry, it's okay, you've talked to Katrina. Kind of summarize in terms of the minutes and get.
We don't want to find a letter to.
Plan, when I revise the plan based on the inputs from.
Yeah.
Whoever, I'm going to put a letter together that says, here's how I address this, here's how I address this, here's how I address this.
Your usual whip.
Okay, where am I?
I don't know.
E.
Transformers, yeah.
Okay, E two and E three, we talked a little bit about the, the larger electrical transformer units and so forth. Ralph has done a number of developments and understands that because of the density of this development, the closeness, uh, proximity of, of the units to one another, this is going to be a challenge and he's, he's up for, you know, facing this challenge of trying to hide, uh, these larger units that have to sit out right behind the curb line. So, uh, that, that's going to be up to him to do and that he was up for the challenge. Under drainage comments, F five, I want to talk about the pond for just a minute, we talked a little bit about it a while ago. And I want the board to understand what, what we believe and, and what we feel about that pond. The estimated seasonal, estimated seasonal high water levels. The estimated seasonal, estimated seasonal high water levels elevations from tests done by different people, and I'm just gonna read some numbers to you, 54.5, 57.5, and 57.5. Rich proposes the bottom of that pond to be 57.5, right at the estimated seasonal high water table. We've suggested in this comment that they might consider raising the bottom and making this, instead of a stormwater wetlands, rather a second infiltration pond. They're gonna get the same credits for water quality if they do that. However, he, as a design engineer, one, wants to keep that lower depth for more volume for the flood protection, as well as he believes that this will become and will support wetland plants from the estimated seasonal high water table readings that he has. And we talked about a deeper pond that would have a water feature fountain in it. I think that's gone away. We know we're gonna have a pond that during a lot of runoffs, we're gonna have water in it until it either outflows through the overflow provisions that they have or goes on into the groundwater. I'm gonna tell the board right now that I don't believe you're gonna have more than three feet of water, maybe four, in that pond at any one particular time at the peak, and it's all gonna be gone.
It's gonna come down.
Well, some of those soils, tests in this area were like an inch in 20 minutes. Some of the other soils were rapid perks and sandy, so it does change a little bit in that area. But I'm also gonna tell the board that this estimated seasonal high water table, you might have a wet bottom, as they're proposing, and you might have a dry bottom that has nothing but grass in it. They wanna continue with this wet bottom design, so we're asked them or suggested in this comment that they should go through the stormwater management standards and provide some channels and some shelves, if they're gonna do that, and getting back to your comments earlier about plantings. So if they wanna do that, you know, we have no problem. I just want the board to know that, you know, I don't think we're gonna have standing water, and as Gene expressed, they're concerned about that, except during the flooding, and we may not have enough water for the plants.
Rich, you wanted to work one way or the other.
Yeah. And let me just point out that either way, in terms of stormwater management and treating the stormwater properly and meeting the requirements of the master's stormwater policy and Raleigh's stormwater bylaw, it's not, whether it's dry or wet, we are over attenuating or over treating total suspended solids. So it will work both ways, but we would prefer to get this down close to the groundwater and have a wetland-type community grow up in there for a number of reasons. You know, we think that it will look better, it will give you some diversity to the landscaping out there. You know, you probably get different birds and things that would be attracted to it. And it generates some material that we can use on the site and provides more protection for stormwater events, which I think is a good idea. This is an isolated area. It's where it all goes now, but I think, in this case, the more, the better in terms of volume of storage.
Yeah, and it's just been proven. It attenuates pollutants better than grass does.
And I think that when we get out there and start digging, I mean, it's tough. You get one hole, you're digging, and you're in this little, you know, square, and you can see what the estimated high groundwater is based on, you know, redoxymorphic features. You know, when you open that thing up, you really get a clear picture of what's happening a lot better than digging the test hole. So we'll, we'll get it down at the groundwater level, and I'm confident that we'll get some wetland plants growing in there.
But Larry makes a good point, if you have a dry bottom, some shelves, you know.
Yep.
You'll figure that out when you get down.
Yes.
All right. So you're open to that?
Yep.
Okay, everything else under that section, we've addressed today. Under the summary, item four, the last paragraph starting with "however", picked up on the landscape plan that some of the plantings were going to land directly over the utility corridors, and no telling how many would land over services. So what we agreed to do was to, that they're going to adjust the landscape plan to miss those mains and services after they put the utilities in, which obviously going before the landscaping, and they do their asphalt and have their asphalt locations over these services and mains, and then they'll adjust their landscape around it. On that point, on the landscape plan, as we discussed today, I'm gonna take, as we have in the past, the quantity of plantings which they have, and in your decision, it should be written in that you're gonna have promised for this development 80 oaks and 60 elms and 42 lindens and so forth and so on to go in this development. And then that way, they can move the landscaping around a bit as opposed to this plan, providing you get your, you know, your basic landscaping that Tom went over tonight along the road and your planting beds and so forth, but we wanna be able to adjust it to miss the utilities. And then if we get to the end of the, end of the day and there was 100 oaks and we've only got room for 80, well, that's, that's what the board's gonna have to accept, because you don't wanna go around sticking big oak trees in places that you don't need. Ralph's response to it was, "We've got plenty of places to put all of the trees," and he told me how he does his landscaping, you know, he goes out of state and actually creates his own nursery here and then draws from it as he needs it. So I'm confident that we can adjust the landscaping to the utilities and that the project can be landscaped based on the landscape plans and the quantities given.
So you just associate...
It's gonna be somewhat of a moving target until we get to the end there.
No, but give some flexibility and some function.
Yeah. That's that. Next item, H4.
How did I know it was gonna go to that one next?
Rich, could you point out that strip line?
Yeah, that strip right here.
Right, right there. And, you know, I wish this had, you know, come to my mind sooner, but it really didn't until after a site visit out there, which is, and we didn't really talk about it, but we're gonna move those parking spaces that are on the, kind of the crown there of that curved road. We're gonna move them all and put them all together and then move the turnaround a little bit to the east, so they miss the existing landscaping. But getting back to that little 75-foot wide strip or so, my question was whether or not that would be better served to have that as part of the residential or to leave it as they proposed it as part of the golf. And my thought was, if it's parked, my thought was, if it's in residential and you, and this residential's granted a special permit, then you can do what you did on the Main Street project whereby you can say that's a no-cut, no-disturb area. You don't go in there. We've already talked about, we're not going in there to put additional plantings, and it's protected that way. I think their philosophy was that if you leave it with golf, and golf has a conservation restricted on it, restriction on it, it's protected that way, and that was their preference. So I bring it up so that we can resolve that.
Well, number one, that would have to be on it, well, I don't wanna get into that next meeting anymore.
Oh, it's there.
In terms of, because I'd like to see some kind of, you have a draft, but kinda, I know you and Katrina going back and forth about to have actually a plan, and there's, you know, a conservation restriction plan that goes along with the future conservation language. But part of that is, okay, we're gonna, but along the lines of what Larry's saying, if you're gonna lease, you know, we're not privy to the exact transactional details of what you're gonna do. You're gonna lease, if it's a less C, you can put it, you know, as part of your lease, that that stays non-disturbed. But I agree with Larry, and for the sake of the butter, I don't wanna see them putting, you know, you know, in that back area now, sometimes the shed, you know, they put golf equipment for cleaning, you know, for doing the golf course, you know, mowers and all that stuff. None of that should be, it should be a no-disturb area for the butter. But I don't care whether it's part of the residential or part of the...
I have no problem, you know, making that a no-disturb area. I, you know, can we, can we, what can we do?
Because it's a buffer strip for the butters, and it should remain as that.
Well, I'm just trying to find it in the zoning. I believe that it, that already, because it's on the golf course, you are prohibited from experiencing the golf course in a place that's already wooded, under the zoning.
Right, because it's a non, right.
So that's already wooded, that's why I said you're already protected, because it's in the, it's in the golf course.
I know they're not gonna expand it, Rich, but I don't want stuff them even, you know, the golf...
You can do it with...
Maintenance people using it.
Are you kidding me? Have, I mean, he's...
I've been there a while.
It has to be a mom golf.
Yeah, I was thinking Birmingham, they have...
Whatever will be the preference of the board, but the CR is enhanced protection.
She was thinking so.
The buffer is not.
That's what I would think, a no-cut, no-disturb zone.
It's 30-year applicable, that's it.
Well, even for 30 years, it's really enforceable.
Yeah, I don't want you, I mean, Larry, you're changing a lot of lines at this point, you know, having them trade, you know.
I mean, we're willing to give you what you want in either scenario. I just think, no matter, for us, it's identical.
Right, you're right, yeah.
In my opinion, for the town, and you can verify with your council, the CR is improved protection for you and much better.
I think that's probably right.
Okay, but we got the council.
They'll leave it as it is.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for pointing out, Rich, and Ralph, and Jill.
Right. And lastly, last, very last item in the order, we talked about this today, this was more or less a suggestion for them to think about with adding another inch of mixed pavement, so that's theirs to think about. I don't think it's ours to tell them, you know, the thickness of the pavement in this roadway is not gonna become a town road, we're not gonna accept it. The town of Raleigh's not gonna accept it, so... The standard that they provided is a good standard for this, if they're sub-basis group, so...
Consistent with other developments that we've...
It is, yeah. Not consistent with Raleigh's subdivision rules of reg.
They never got their top code, they got past the binding.
Not consistent with Raleigh's rules of reg.
Right, I am talking about...
With many other, with many other towns, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. The rest of it, we've pretty well hashed over and, you know, I think we're ready to go for the next rendition of revisions.
Thank you for stopping, so, you saved probably...
Oh, it's exceptionally productive.
Forty-five minutes.
Anyway, two hours.
But it was productive.
And it focuses, thank you for the focus. All right, anything else? We're gonna set a meeting first weekend, first week in November, first Wednesday after the election.
Did you wanna kinda create a schedule of what you're going to cover at the next couple of meetings, and also maybe a list of things that you want me to accomplish before that meeting? I know one is sending out all these plans.
Yeah, the input for the plans on the board.
Conservation restriction has been sent to town council.
It has?
And that has to be reviewed and approved and sent to EEOA, because that will take, Katrina and I discussed that, that's a couple of month process, and if we don't do it, then we won't have it approved for your, you know, for whatever decision you may make.
Turner Hill, yeah, it goes, there's a, there's a back sheet there in Turner Hill.
Yeah, it has to go through your board, the conservation, you, and the EEOA.
Well, it has to go through the conservation commission, doesn't it?
Yes, and the EEOA.
Right.
The state government in that, that's a longer process.
I don't think they're gonna be shy about suggesting changes to it either. I mean, from what I've seen, you've specified a lot of revisions.
I mean, that's possible, that's...
In terms of the language. But the ConCom is on board in terms of they're holding restriction, that's not a problem or an issue?
They haven't even really been able to look at this project, yes.
I got an email from them, but I don't think it reflects on the CR at all.
No.
Pardon?
I don't think that letter reflects on the CR.
It says they'd like to be involved in the drafting, because they have had a lot of experience with CRs, so, which...
We started dialogue with Brent, we started dialogue.
It would be great if that could be one of the priorities, just because of the length of time it will take at the state level.
Sure. Okay, well, I'm sure we'll get an opinion from town council pretty soon.
Did the board want to come up with any other areas that they would like town council to look at, or in particular? I know Judy Pickett said she was going to be reviewing it in terms of what our zoning bylaw requires, and we don't really require that much in our zoning bylaw, but, you know, different areas.
Well, I'm most concerned with enforceability, so, I mean, I assume that's what she's looking at it for, right?
Right, but she's not looking at it in terms of public access.
Public access, yes.
Or if the golf course isn't there anymore.
Well...
I'm also wondering what happens to the buildings if the golf course isn't there, there's a conservation restriction in place, can the building still be used as a restaurant without the golf course? And also just the definitions of the golf course versus country club. We don't allow golf courses today in Raleigh. We allow country clubs to do country clubs automatically and golf courses, so...
I think they do, but...
And is this a non-conforming use today? It never got a special permit to be a country club.
Ken, he doesn't look at it as a non-conforming use.
So, well, I just...
I mean, it was allowed as a country club back then, so it hasn't, it's not a non-conform use because it was allowed.
Right, I'm not shy, I agree with him.
Well, okay, but that is a zoning enforcement option.
Right.
Because we went around and around about this.
But it would, it would help the applicants to know what kind of permitting procedure they have to go through if they didn't want to expand anything.
Well, that was the question, whether or not they would have to go in front of the ZVA to do something with that building.
But we can, we cannot expand anything once, within the confines, Katrina and I talked about it, we have, we have a nine-hole golf course, but we can't expand anything, we can't improve, we can't change. I mean, the rules are pretty clear in there.
Right, and that was my understanding.
And in the CR as well.
I would think our...
I'll give you an example. Let's assume we have, for some reason, somebody, you know, gave the man who runs the golf course 40 acres on the other side, he was able to make an 18-hole golf course. We could attach it, and that could become an 18-hole golf course, but we can't make any changes to what we have, nothing, because we're subject to per, absent an act of legislature, we can't do anything because we've agreed to the CR. How about in the areas that are already disturbed? In a disturbed area, you may, you have to be able to, because a golf course can't survive.
Yeah, you can reorient, it says you can reorient the...
But I can't, I can't, the 75 strip, I can't take virgin land and make it something else. I can take a fairway and alter a tee box, I can take the green and move it forward. Within disturbed areas, absolutely, you have to, that's, a golf course requires turnover and shifting all the time.
It would help us, addressing all of you, to know with your, Winover owns it now, and you're right, they still own the property.
Certainly, they do.
So they own, so we just wanna make sure that, you know, we do the CR, it goes with whoever the owner is, as they, you know, whoever ends up being the owner.
Yep.
You're gonna have two owners, I mean, will the golf course...
We talked about that.
I had mentioned that before, will the golf course owner still, will it be two lots?
There will be two lots, it'll be two different owners.
Two different owners, okay, so it's not, it's not a less C lease thing?
No, well, there could be, it's still a lease, the golf course...
I know it'll be two, but I'm saying that...
But, for example, the golf course is gonna be owned by a completely separate operating entity that owns that land, and then there'll be an operator, and the condo will be owned separately as well.
Okay.
Should it be a country, should it be called a country club?
No, we're still wrestling. Country club, there's no definition in our zoning as to what a country club is. You know, it's an implication, it's kind of a...
And the reason why, we wanted to bring it back to the original name, you know, because when they changed it to Carriage Pines, it just, you know, it kinda lost its luster a little bit. You know, years ago, people knew the Raleigh Country Club. Nobody knows Carriage Pines. So that was one of the main reasons why we wanted to bring the name back.
You're right. I guess I just, just to continue, I wanna know exactly what you're planning or the other entity, whether you're involved or not, how, what are you gonna do with that building?
Which building?
The...
Clubhouse?
Clubhouse.
The pro shop?
Yes. The only change is that overhang that we, see, you weren't with us on the sidewalk. All we're doing is extending one side of the building to provide for an overhang over the porch, nothing else.
Standing number of fences, right.
Yeah, there's nothing else.
And we're, oh, we're new siding, new roof.
Oh, renovations, but no alteration to the footprint.
Yeah, we have a... Yeah, we have a...
Transfer of liquor license, make it more into a restaurant that is now right now.
And that's up to the...
Well, that's what I'm asking, because these things have to do with the non-conforming.
What we're looking to seek is a seasonal beer and wine license, not a liquor license, okay? Right now, the liquor license is with the Back Nine Tavern, which is under the control of, I forget the gentleman's name, Mitchell Mitch.
And you can't get one until that's five years old.
The previous caterer.
Right, previous caterer. So, we don't plan on opening this facility year-round. It'll only be open for the golf season. It will have a seasonal beer and wine license. And, you know, you know, we have a license to serve food now, you know, pre-made sandwiches and so forth, and maybe some burgers and dogs. But that's about the extent of it. We're not going to make a full-fledged restaurant.
I can give you, I can give you a description of the current uses of the property, I mean, that's not a problem.
But I want, give that to Katrina.
Yeah, I'll, I'll write it, I'll do a...
Now, so that gives us more guidance on where we have to go with the building inspector, what are our options?
No, we'll give you a full list.
We don't want to give you the correct guidance.
Right, and we'll tell you, I can't name the, the name of the entity, but I'll tell you, the two separate, I'll, I'll go through it, I'll do an outline, and I'll give it to you. That way, the board will have some format.
Rather than know them now.
No, oh, yeah, it's, it's good.
You've had this discussion, okay.
Yeah, Katrina's actually been following up with me on that.
Any other questions, if you want to go on with the meeting?
And so the plan for next meeting? What will you be reviewing at the next meeting?
The cons, well...
Conservation restriction, I just...
Nothing. Everybody, everyone's dismissed.
And will the department comments?
Yeah, I think you should set, I think you should set a timetable for the department replies, so that, you know. Because Rich doesn't want to really make revisions from my comments until he probably hears back on the fire department and water department.
And we just said we were going to meet on November 7th, so if you tell me how many plans you want tomorrow, I can have FedEx to you a Friday delivery, and they can get them right away. If you even wanted me to send them to each individual department, you give me the place, I can do that.
Oh, no, no, I'll do that.
Yeah, but that means we need them Monday, the... I can't read this, is that the, I've got a little calendar right here.
Monday, the 5th, I can't read it.
I'll ask for comments back by a, a week before the meeting.
No, you're not going to get, you got to get them, the Mondays, you, you won't get them a week, they won't turn them around that way.
No, he said, she said the week before, but it'd be...
If they don't get them for another, how many days? That's only going to give them a week and a half.
Oh, yeah.
A week, a week. If you get them by Monday.
I mean, they...
They don't say Monday.
They've already seen these.
They've already seen them, there's not...
They've been, they've been given everything.
They say, okay, that's fine.
It's not a huge change.
No, they're just like looking at the tweaks.
Yeah.
I mean, the police chief walked, walked with us.
He was with us, right.
Right.
And the fire department was already coming, and the water department was coming, and so...
So, that's the goal in the next, any other goals that the board would like to, I mean, I'm trying to give guidance, you know, Larry's, one final revision that we can...
And what about the CR, are we going to go over the CR?
We've got to wait for Judy to weigh in.
Yeah, all right.
So, they'll get them next meeting? So, next meeting will be conservation restriction and, and looking at department comments?
They don't even have to, yeah.
Seven, seven's okay for me.
But I can, we can, if we do the CR, that's the one that I really was concerned about.
Yeah, we're just coming close to a final plan here, right?
I hope that I'm going to make one more revision.
I think we made some good end roads on that tonight. Some good progress. Thank you very much, Larry. Seven, seven. We're on meeting the 24th.
Okay, good.
Isn't that Thanksgiving?
No.
And you did mention the conservation letter, just into the record, so that he knows that you've accepted it.
Oh, wait, I, thank you, I didn't. Thank you very much. Let me see that. I want to implore that the board, as the board read Brent's letter, stated, Brent's like conservation agent. I'm not going to read the... Well, I have to actually have some. The conservation departments review the above-subject application initial accompanying plan, open space, residential development. Offers the following comments. Number one, the property doesn't appear to contain jurisdictional wetland resource areas, state WPA and local WTB. Proposed project activities as presented on the initial plan do not appear to be occurring with jurisdictional wetland resource areas, and I think we all understand this so far well. The scope and size or area of the project does appear to trigger permitting review under stormwater management and road control bylaw under the Raleigh Conservation Commission authority. The Raleigh Conservation Commission files contain the following. I think you've already been in price for this, have you seen this? You might want, you might want to address this next meeting anyways, or have it dealt with. I think it's more of a paper. There's, there's some open order conditions issued the 16th of October, 2007. Extended to October 16, 2014, for 54 unit, again, the previous owner. So, there are some open order conditions there that have to be dealt with to get certificate of compliances, which hadn't been asked for by Windover, I guess. There's another one, order conditions issued the 14th of January, 2008, for restoration removal of golf course infrastructure, open space, again, it's not really relevant right now, but it needs to be still done. Proposed conservation restriction, public access easement, August 16, 2007. Submitted by Windover Development LLC, communications ceased on December 5, 2007, not finalized. Makes sense too, because they stopped doing it. The Raleigh Conservation Commission understands there is a proposed conservation restriction involved with this present project. Proposal in respect, the request of the planning board incorporate public access to protected natural resources as a necessary part of the permitting for this project to provide value to the community. I think we're on that page. Raleigh Conservation Commission is available should the planning board desire any input in the review of the proposed CR or conservation restriction, since the commission has long experience in reviewing conservation restrictions.
Well, since they're going to be holding the...
The Raleigh Conservation Commission, yes, respectfully request participate further in reviewing the more recently revised plans, full size, based on the need for further review, and again, they, they have access to HR, Grand Socia, so.
He doesn't acknowledge in there that the commission is going to be holding the restriction. So, I think it's important for us to know that they're okay with that.
Really noted, right? Okay, thank you, Brent, for issuing that, okay? We need to go on with other business. Thanks, see you then.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Jill. Sorry, I need a motion to continue the hearing at 7:30 on... It's a date after your last, I guess, the number seven of them? Seconded by Jean, motion by Cliff Pierce, all those in favor?
Aye.
I got a motion as... Thanks a lot. Got a lot of profit.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, you got a quickie here?
Yep.
Thirty seconds.
Great.
Done the agenda.
The members got, all got Larry's report on the Hamilton project and their additional information.
Should I sit all the way right up here?
Yes, okay. All right, Larry, do you have a 30-second summary? Does Larry want to give us 30-second summary of the one out there? Generally, I understand, came up with a figure here that we're going to get a check for a time?
Yes, that's the bottom line. That was, that was part of what I was asked to do. One of the purposes was to come up, do this final, a, a final, finally nearing final site inspection, establish a surety, which I did for the following reconstruction of Main Street sidewalk, improvement of the central street parking, question mark, paint line and, paint line and mark, striping, signage, railing along the Church Street seating area, and hardscape, landscaping, and cleanup. Total of, should be able to be accomplished under 15,000, that's what I suggested the board request as a surety from the developer to complete the work.
All right, do you have any comment?
Nope, should I just, for the record, my name?
Yes, please.
Rich Kalman, for South Main Street, Ipswich. Ken Hamilton is out of town this week because of prior commitments. He has no issues with getting a check, knows that those, I'll just say this, from what I understand is this was triggered because the bakery's ready to open. Just to let you know, there's a big, I, I, just to let you know what triggered this, from what I understand.
They're trying to get a, one residential unit and one commercial unit of the ground floor, the last...
It's a bakery?
That's where, the bakery sandwich shop, yeah, so.
Arties, is that it? Is that the one?
Is there, is there another building left to be, or space left to be approved? Correct, there is one unit because there are, right, there's an issue. Correct, one, we're asking that it would be unit four, can, that would be remained unreleased with no CO.
So, unit four will be before?
Correct, that's, well, yeah, we're supposed to discuss that, I'm just going to say, but, because I just...
That's, right now, that permit says what it is, and it's very clear in the permit what that's designed, what we have one for the unit and the whole process that goes there with it.
Because I noticed that a sign for the new tenant is up already, and it's not gone to historic yet. Okay, I will certainly, well, I can say, I will work with Ken to get whatever final approvals need to be done for that to be opened then. I just know that's what triggered, Ken saying, well, write the check that's necessary because that gentleman quit his other job, is ready to open, the building's done. Ken wanted to say, look, he knows it's taking longer than he would have liked, but it's, it's financially has put him right to the brink, as you could have expected, as we were told.
So, now that we get a surety?
Yeah, now we get a surety, I'd like a motion to release one more residential unit so I can get the cash flow and to one commercial unit so that the tenant can go there.
So, the 15,000 would cover the parking spaces on Central Street? On Central Street, yeah. If they're so built? No, no, the, the parallel spaces on Central Street cannot be built, according to Scott Levitt. The, the discussion was in my letter, perhaps to those slope spaces right in the intersection, which I'm not a great proponent of. Many, many people have suggested that they be left there, and, and that would improve the surface for that.
Can I just say this for the record? What I was hoping to do tonight was just get, get the bond posted, the surety so those could be released. Ken hasn't even seen this letter, so the comments that Larry's raised, that there are still things to come back, I think, before this board...
That's going on the seventh, then, well, we'll have the vote on the seventh, when we have, have resolved that.
I'm just saying, there's some things that I know Ken would probably like to comment on, that Larry had to say that could hopefully be decided finally on, on set.
Maybe we can revisit those parks.
It's just the original.
I think, I think.
Just the original.
Well, yeah, because I think, I think Larry opened that up in his letter, even, as to, otherwise...
So, you just want the units released from the board right now, but you don't want them to start modifying?
No, I, I just think, I, I, in fairness, Kenny hasn't seen this.
Yeah, that's right. As your, as his representative, you make perfect sense.
You know, he was, all we're releasing is the bakery space, or is that... And one, and one residential. Which is on the first floor? I don't know where unit four really is. I don't think it sounded like it was on the first floor. When I talked to him, I think he, no, it's upstairs. I think it's upstairs in the, it's in the other building. Where is the, where is the...
I'm not sure if the planning board was specific when they released certain units, seven units. I think they've been shuffled around, so I think there's someone living in the second building, possibly, or someone moving in.
I just want to make sure that there's one unit that is still...
There is, there is, there is.
Unit four is, is not only do we have the surety, but we have the CO.
Correct.
Because there are some issues that have not been...
No, no, that's why we have the surety.
And Ken knows that too.
And, and so does the building inspector, so.
And historic.
For the record, the large transformer blocks, Larry, on Church Street, I, I believe it's the light traffic control blocks.
Oh, okay. He has, he has put some plantings around it.
Yeah.
When they fill out and mature, might be enough to soften it up.
So, I'm just saying that we still have some, I know there's some issues remaining, and so is Ken. And I think in fairness, tonight, I mean, you've had a long night already, why, it's just, we dress this, that lets the cash flow, that's been really crucial.
Is it that the building really doesn't turn black?
I think there's enough leverage still there.
I do.
Yeah, and he wants to finish it. I have a check.
All right.
I have a check.
All right, then you're going to be dismissed, too.
Okay. Do I make it out to the Town of Raleigh?
Yes.
There we go, my friend.
And now, is it understood that we want to hold this?
Yep.
And, and then find out what kind of surety he wants to use to replace this?
Well, I think this might be the check, this could be it.
Oh.
For ease of...
You two discuss that, all right?
Right, for, we could discuss that, but for ease, I think it may just stay this way.
Because we're not going to make a mistake until you're sure.
Rich, you will be representing him all the way through the rest of this process. Well, I, now that I understand he's this close to the end, I think, I will, I think Ken would actually probably prefer it. You might have been happy that he's not here today, because I know he's... You better serve him.
All right.
I understand, I, I mean, I understand.
Okay, I don't want to digress.
But I understand, I understand.
I don't want to digress.
And so with that...
All right, what's up?
Was the board going to release?
Do we have to vote on that?
Well, I think a letter has to be written and signed by the board.
Yeah.
We should vote to release you.
I just want to vote, and then we'll have, yeah, and then I can sign the letter.
I will talk to you, maybe you can hold that with work, just in case, but I want you to have it, that's the simplest thing given tonight.
The building inspector needs to get permission, you know, he won't do anything until, the building inspector won't do anything until, you know, we have this vote.
Right.
I have a motion to release one residential unit, and obviously to release the ground floor commercial unit, you know, we all know on the end, for the bakery, for the purpose of the bakery, and so that Mr. Hamilton can put, put a tenant in.
Right.
So, for, for a total of eight residential units released now?
Yep.
And that's the second?
With one remaining, yes.
And the second?
Seconded by Jean Patrillo, motion by Cliff Pierce, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
That's okay, I, we knew it was, could have been a half an hour, but it was more likely going to be two hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was good, that was interesting, though.
Has everybody read the minutes?
Yeah.
I've read them.
I'll make a motion.
I thought they were pretty good. I wasn't even at the meeting, I looked at the video, I thought they looked like the video.
We do have several things to, Market Basket never mentioned anything, 300 new brickwork chart plate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want me to just update the board? We received the $1,000, we're waiting for from Scott Silva, and Larry did submit a, a technical review on 300 new brickwork chart plate.
Yeah.
Look and read it. Larry, you want to cover that?
Yeah, basically, the review was, the, the review was for the signage, and with the exception, these following exceptions, his signage is clear. He put the no, no parking fire lane sign, which was supposed to be on the northerly property land, so as you're driving back through there, you would see it on a post. He put it on the face of the building. Now, I'm not sure that people will notice it there, but I'm willing to recommend to the board that you let it go as a condition that if it doesn't work, he's going to have to put it on the post over here where it was shown on the approved plan. He also put a second sign on the building, too, so he's got two over there as opposed to one facing this way. He said he didn't want to put that one in because he snowplow, said he's going to probably knock it down, because he plows the snow to the right. The same thing happened on the other side of the building, but I have no problem with any on the other side of the building, because it's so narrow through there, nobody can park there anyway. So, putting it on the side of the building is okay.
That's more just like a fire thing.
Lastly, he put the intersection sign, the sideways T, on, kind of in front of his property instead of up closer to Schilling's Drive. So, as you come over that crest, you can see it, but you have to be looking for it. Ask him when he relocates the guardrails, he says he's going to do, it's sitting right in the middle of the guardrail, move it, move it north a little bit, so I think it's a little more visibility.
That makes sense.
Aside from that, I'm, I'm good with everything that he did, so I'd recommend the board consider signing off on his COs for his yogurt shop or convenience store, whatever it is.
Two shops.
Two shops, he's trying to find the, do something with the old Kathy's Country Kitchen space. I figured it was. Convenience store.
So that's a summary of that letter.
That might work.
Somebody make a motion.
Something like that. Need a motion?
I'll make the-
Except Mr. Graham's recommendations facilitate Scott Silva's next-
Second.
Cliff Pierce's second.
Motion to allow the, the two units to be filled by yogurt shop.
Yours. How do those conditions get on the record, though, that Larry mentioned?
Yeah, that does need to be put on the record, again, this is an ongoing project whereby, as you know, interrupt the motion that says that we can review any tenant that goes in sequentially, or-
Because of-
He has to come to the board to make sure he's done everything else he's supposed to do.
And the, and the conditions were that if that sign didn't work?
Two signs.
If two signs didn't work?
Yeah.
Right, the one in the building and the one, uh-
This, this is going to be one of the letters, right, so?
What, to Ken, to, to Scott?
Yeah, so to be sent to Ken Ward?
Yes.
I think you pretty much extracted from that letter, right, I think it says.
Okay.
Ken appreciates this updates from our meetings. All right, all right, we still have the motion up there.
Open the minutes?
Seconded by David Jacob.
Oh, that'll all show that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, I just needed that, because if I'm going to write the letter, I need to get all that to-
Right.
All right, thanks for bringing that up.
Am I writing the letter? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to set a date? Is it too premature to set the date for the Raleigh Village Green pre-construction meeting, or not?
Oh, no, we have to, they, they would like to get together.
Are they ready?
Wait, wait a second, where, where is that?
Matt says the B on Old Business.
Oh, great.
Does anybody want to go besides Katrina? We need one planning board.
We need one member of the-
I'm in town, so I'd be glad to go.
All right, David Jacob will go to that.
As long as you left-
Set a date, then come up with a date, yeah, what can you tell them?
And they just sent an email to me tonight, wanting to meet just with me, I think, I, I don't know, and I've asked them if, if that's separate from the pre-constru- Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's separate, pre-construction goes by our, our permit, and has, and Larry has to be there, there's definite conditions for marking, no disturbance, no consuls.
Maybe they want to talk about something else.
Oh, so it's onsite?
Yeah, it's onsite.
And, and so both of you, when, would you like to, do you want to just set it up tomorrow then?
Yeah.
I can do it in the morning, I can do it in the late afternoon.
All right, we'll have to coordinate that between-
I got a two o'clock at-
Coordinate that between David, Larry, and Katrina.
Okay.
All right, is that fine?
Okay, we can do that tomorrow.
All right.
And I'm good on Friday morning.
Can we go forward and vote to fill a planning board member vacancy?
Vote to fill?
You're supposed to take a vote.
Vote, vote to ask the selectmen to fill it.
It's a selectmen to fill, we have to, because it's been so long, by, by state statute, yeah. Just a vote that we acknowledge that there is a vacancy, and it has to selectmen to fill it by giving them a letter.
To find somebody.
Yeah, well, that, that gives them the authority from us to appoint somebody if we have some.
And it's, it's two positions, the associate and the-
Can I have a motion to fill the associate in?
Make a motion. Well, wait a minute, I'm not sure what we're voting on, I mean-
We're voting, go ahead.
The associate member, the selectman is the sole approving body for that. But filling, filling somebody's term, are we doing that?
Yes.
Yeah, that requires vote boards to vote on.
Right.
So, like, when you were appointed, both boards, you two.
Maybe it should be two different motions.
So, I'm not sure what we're voting for, I mean, they could-
Because that's what Debbie said.
I think we're just talking about encouraging them to find a new person.
Debbie said it needs to be a formal vote, the planning board has to decide if they want to fill the position, and if they do, they need to send a letter to the selectmen asking them to fill the position.
All right, can I have a motion to send a letter to the-
The full, the full position. Actually, she said both, there is correspondence from our-
There isn't, I have it, I have it right. The selectmen shall fill such vacancy if such board fails to give said notice within the time there is. So we just need to give them notice. If there's a vacancy in a board consisting of two or more members, except the board's members have been elected, the remaining members shall get a written notice thereof within one month of said vacancy, what happened, it just expired. You know, we have to give them notice again, because we haven't given them notice since the election. More than one month is expired, so it's like giving them notice again.
Yeah, oh, I get it, but I just think, we really need-
There's an email from Debbie too. She says the process for filling the seats is formal, if the planning board is in agreement that they want to fill the seats, the planning board needs to alert the board of selectmen in writing that they want to fill these open seats, and request the board of selectmen to post notices of the vacancies.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
All right, motion?
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Cliff, second?
Second.
David, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I made a motion to accept the minutes.
No, we didn't do that.
Second.
These are September 19, 2012 minutes.
Do you want a motion?
It's a motion by David Jacob to accept this September 19, 2012 minutes, seconded by Cliff Pierce, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn?
No.
I'm sorry.